All right, I think we'll go ahead and get started. So pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on Thursday, May 6, 2021. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held Thursday, August 5, 2021, at 4:00 p.m. in the Board Conference Room, second floor at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Coming Street here in Omaha. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Retirement Office at the Teacher Administrative Center during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board of Education Meeting Room on the North Wall. With that, Cecilia, would you call the roll, please?
Bourne.
Here.
Havelovic.
Here.
Harrison Bach.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Logan.
Here.
Plasic. And Ray.
Here.
Six present.
All right, thank you, Cecilia. So moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, this is the, this is the, one of the board meetings that we have, public comment. Just kind of the message for the public comment period, masks are required to be worn covering both the nose and mouth during public comment. If you do not have a mask, please let Ms. Carter know and she'll supply one for you. Do we have any speakers?
We have no one registered.
So far, we don't have anyone.
Oh.
So, so far, we have one speaker who submitted a form. The Board has adopted OHSER's public comment policy dated March 6, 2018, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. The same policy limits individuals to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect the time limit. Ms. Carter will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Ms. Carter know and she'll provide one for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular staff member or trustee board member, we ask that you not mention the staff member or trustee board member by name, and instead provide that information to Ms. Carter. She will assist the Board and look into those details for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit written commentary, please provide it to Ms. Carter. She will make sure each member of the Board gets a copy. As a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your, begin your public comment. So with that, I think we'll go ahead with our first speaker.
My name is Walter Suedodd, W-A-L-T-A-S-U-E-D-O-D-D. I live at, on Madison Street, 3233 Madison in Omaha. I am the President of the OEA Retired Organization. And on behalf of the OEA Retired, I would like to thank the Board of Trustees for their service to our members and your dedication to our association. You will be truly missed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other members of the public that wish to comment? All right, seeing that, seeing none, we'll close the public comments section of the agenda, and we'll move on to action on the May 6, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Cecilia has sent those out. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I move approval as submitted.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion, questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, Cecilia, could you take the roll, please?
Johnson.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Harrison Bach.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Havelovic.
Aye.
And Bourne.
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right, they are approved. Agenda Item Number Four, Cecilia, will you give us an overview on the financial statements as of April 2021?
Certainly. For the period ending April 30, 2021, the pension plan had a valuation of 1.1 billion 417 million, which is an about approximately 11% increase from the same time last year. The plan had 14 million 22,000 dollars on hand in cash as of April 30. That is the financial report for the month.
Are there any questions for Cecilia relative to the financial report? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and jump down to the discussion or presentation from the RFP finalist interviews. Recall, we have two firms that have submitted RFP responses that we've considered, and at the last board meeting, the Board decided they wanted to see and hear from each of these prospective vendors. And so with that, we'll start with the Groom Law Group for the first half hour, and then we'll move into our other candidate.
Turn all the volumes up. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sure can.
Okay, enlarge you, and close this. All right, and as I said in the email yesterday, you'll only see the three up front, but everyone can see you on a big screen.
All right.
All right. Welcome. As Cecilia mentioned, you can only see the, there's the, the, OHSER's Board is present, but you can, due to technology and COVID, you can only see several of us. So with that, I'm Pat Bourne, I'm the Chair of OHSER's Board. If you wanted to, do you want to, I'm sure you're aware of who the Board members are, so maybe if you could take a few minutes and introduce yourselves and your qualifications, and then I believe Cecilia had provided you with some questions that we wanted to ask the Board. We'll kind of go through those, and then there'll be an opportunity for other Board members to ask questions. We want to make it as interactive or discussion as possible. So with that, if you kind of introduce yourself and maybe talk a little bit about the firm, and then we'll just kind of jump into some of those questions that Cecilia provided you. Does that sound okay?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Melanie Walker, can everyone hear me okay? Yes, okay, good. I'm from Siegel. I have worked at Siegel for about 22 years. The last 15 years are still pretty much exclusively with public sector retirement plans and retiree health plans. And I have a lot of experience with compliance reviews. I've been done about 20 or 30 in my career, and at least half or more that I've been the lead person leading the compliance review. So that's, that's me. I'll turn it over to you, David.
Sure, I'm David Pearl, I'm a Principal of the Groom Law Group in Washington DC, which is an employee benefits boutique. And when I joined it back in the early 90s, it had about 20 lawyers who did nothing but employee benefits, and now we've got over 80 lawyers who do nothing but employee benefits at all times. And we just have one office in Washington DC where we service clients around the country. And I'm from a group that specializes in public employee retirement systems, and we've done a number of compliance reviews as well, as you've seen in our RFP. I've specialized in public plans for a long time, I'm the author of the BNA Portfolio on Government Plans, it's number 372, former Subcommittee of the ABA Tax Section Employee Benefits Committee Subcommittee on Government Plans, and active at NAPA and act of that sort of thing. And I'm really like one of a number of lawyers that are part of the group this. We've got a number of others who specialize in it and work with retirement systems as well, so we've got more than a dozen. And, you know, we partnered with Siegel because we both have our own strengths, so if you're really looking for an in-depth compliance review, you know, lawyers are going to, lawyers do. We read documents, we're very familiar with the legal requirements, you know, that's our specialty. Siegel, I don't want to speak for Melanie, but, you know, they're really good at the operational, administrative, procedural side of things, and, you know, between the two of us, we've seen really lots of the issues that public plans have and what to look out for. So really, without it, let's turn it back to Melanie to launch you into questions unless you've got questions.
That's good. Do you want me to start, go ahead and address the first question that you sent us, or?
Yeah, if you could, I'll kind of read it so we have it on the record, and then again, any Board member that has any questions as we go through, I'm sure they'll, they'll jump in. So, so with that, let's start. So would you please describe your methods for planning your audit process before it's officially started?
Sure, so there's a lot that goes on before we officially start. The first thing that David and I do is even through the proposal process is we develop a timeframe and a timeline to what, how long each step will take in the process, and, you know, to make sure that we complete it on time. We are also already looking at publicly available documents about your system, you know, statutes, your website, and then we develop a data request that asks for anything that's not publicly available that we would like to review. And, and that's presented, the timeline and the data request is presented at a project initiation call where, you know, the, all of the Siegel and Groom people that are, that are going to work in this team, as well as anybody at the system that's going to work on this project, we have a call together, we walk through the data request, the timeline, we talk about whose, you know, communication protocols, what are your particular concerns that you want us to focus on, things like that, and that's when the audit officially starts. David, do you want to add a few things to that?
Well, that's how we line in our technical approach. You know, from there, we will decide, you know, when we have the follow-up meetings after giving us a time to review all of the documentation. We would do interviews with staff, where we would really go through the sort of life cycle of the participant, all the administrative processes. We probably already have questions of our own, but we would be able to learn more information. And we listen a lot, we ask questions, you have the opportunity to ask questions of us. From that set of interviews, we would come up with some preliminary conclusions, which we would then roach with the Board, have discussions with them before coming up with the draft report. You know, the draft report would then be reviewed again with the Board before anything is presented as a finalized. If we saw any issues that we went along with, we would discuss them with you, you know, in detail before anything would, would, you know, enter the report. Just as an aside, yes, by the way, as we're structuring this, it's also mentioned in the RFP is really what the law firm is, what is centered. Siegel works with us as a subcontractor. The things that you send to us go through our law firm, the things we send to you come from our law firm, and that's really intended to preserve confidentiality, you know, to the extent possible and necessary.
All right, thank you. Any follow-up questions from the Board? Okay. Second question, would you please describe the different types of software that you've encountered with other audits and your qualifications to work with these different types of softwares?
All right, so I'm going to start with the first way that we look at this, and based on looking at software that you're a pension administration system. Well, David and I, we're attorneys, so we're not experts in pension administration systems, although we do obviously work with them through the plans that we work with, but Siegel does have a pension administration practice that is, specializes in public sector pension administration systems. So I talked to my, my main expert about this to get, you know, her information to you that, and her expertise is available to you. So we work with, she, she kind of listed the main software systems I work with, it's all the major ones, Vitex, Sagitech, Oracle, PeopleSoft, Tegrit, Convisys, LifeWorks, which used to be Morno, Chappelle, CPaaS, HR Mecca, CBIZL, all of these different systems, about 15 different systems that they work with on a regular basis. Last year, Siegel also acquired LRWL, which is Leon Westler's Pension Administration System Practice or Business, and, so they are also part of our practice now. And some of the current clients that we have now that we're doing pension administration system work on that's similar in size to your plan is the City of Phoenix, DeKalb County, and Houston Municipal Employees Pension System. We have 24 people in that practice with over 500 years combined experience, so they're all very senior technical people. And we understand that you have a PeopleSoft Oracle system that is the HR system for the Omaha Public Schools that is kind of bolted on with the pension administration system necessary tools, and, and that we, that Siegel has, our practice has worked with, you know, solutions to modify, improve, or reassess those, that, that type of system. Most recently, we did that for the Milwaukee Public Schools. So that's sort of that side, and David, do you want to talk about sort of the systems that, that Siegel and Groom use to, that we would want to use to share data with, with the Omaha system?
Yeah, there's just a few other sort of software aspects may be embedded in that question. Well, one is, you know, a lot of those systems are oriented towards providing data that is, that does have legal compliance aspects, you know, the Section 415 limits would be so one, one of those. And, you know, we have attorneys who are also actuaries, one of them is mentioned, I think, in the board, Mark Carroll, who we would help him use. You know, he, he can, for example, you know, look at the manner in which your system is calculating the 415 limits and confirm whether that's correct. See, there's people that can do the same. So, you know, we can fit in with, you know, looking at whether, you know, you provide proper benefits in that respect. And just as another software aspect, you know, we use HiQ, Cedric's holders, I think is the name of it, and, you know, just any other method that's really available, so we can share data through secure websites so that you don't have to send us a lot of emails or background data, and we can send things to you that same way.
It's like a document sharing area.
Yep.
And Siegel has one as well. Siegel has one of those as well, so we can use whatever platform that you guys prefer.
Absolutely.
All right, sounds good. Any follow-up questions? All right, thank you. Number three, how would you describe the process of a compliance audit? Can you take the Board through, say, just a typical workflow of the process?
Sure, I will start on this one, David, and, and you can follow up as necessary. David gave you a little preview of that, of sort of our process, which we talked about, which starts with a timeframe and a data request, and then a call to, you know, so that everyone's on the same page from, from the system to Groom and Siegel. And then we, we give the system a little bit of time to provide that data request, that data, and at the, and at the same time as it comes in, we review it thoroughly, and that helps us develop a, an extensive list of questions for our onsite interview. It's a workbook of, it could be anywhere from 60 to 80 pages of questions, and it goes through every aspect of a, a public pension plan, from fiduciary and governance to record keeping, then we go through what David referred to as the life cycle of the participant, you know, how do you, you know, how do you determine who's eligible, how do you enroll them, how do you count hours, how do you receive contributions, and through the whole life cycle of someone that goes through your system, we ask detailed questions about that. And not only are we trying to learn more about your plan and confirm what we read in your documents, but this is also, it's intended to be free-form in nature, the interviews, so that we can answer your questions, we can talk in depth about any issues that you are concerned about, that you want us to talk about, and if, as David mentioned, if something comes up that is concerning with respect to compliance, we would discuss it with you then. There may be additional information that you can provide to us on that, and we can talk about, you know, possible solutions, the direction that our analysis would go that would be in the, the written report. And that interview process usually takes any, takes place about eight weeks after the project begins. We, David and I have discussed that we are, we are open to what you guys want us to do as far as in-person or remotely, so that, that's the interview process. And then as soon as that's done, we get together and look at all of our notes, we do any additional research, and we draft a written document. And that written document is provided through Groom Law Group to your councils to, to protect confidentiality so that you may provide comments to us and shape the message that it provides before it's finalized. And so that's, that's sort of a quick review of the process. David, add anything that you would like to do.
I, I think that's good. I'll then flow into the next question if you would like me to start with that.
Okay. All righty. What, what process do you follow if you detect any fraud or other compliance issues during the audit?
Sure, and I'll probably start by saying that there is, in my experience, absolutely no such thing as a plan in the part of the public sector that doesn't have some compliance issues, or only the compliance issues that you don't know about. One of the good things about at least the Internal Revenue Code side of things is that there's also always corrections for things. And, and that's generally what we're, we're looking for if we find a compliance issue, first to discuss it, really what the staff involved, to make sure that we're understanding it properly, that we're not missing some facts or documents. But if there is, you know, we're looking for the solutions too. We, we don't have much of an interest in providing you just a list of problems or about solutions. And in the pension world, there's almost always a solution. Sometimes they may, you know, cost some money, but there's almost always a solution. So we were discussing with you, you know, of course, before we go into the report, make sure that it really is an issue, and then we would present that one side with, you know, options to, to do that. Now, our report wouldn't go on and necessarily fix everything, and that's really a follow-up project of its own, but like I said, we, we have no interest in providing a problem without a solution.
Okay.
You know, I also mentioned, you know fraud, as well as other compliance issues. Typically, the stuff we see is, is, you know, very technical issues under the Internal Revenue Code that are possible interpretations of the statute or the rules that can, you know, really be characterized as fraud, to the extent that those are fraud. There's only a few ways in which we can prevent them. One is, you know, theft of private assets. I would say in my entire career in employee benefits, I've only seen that twice. The, but other things can happen, particularly how data comes into the system. You know, one of the, the issues in compliance with public retirement systems is that the system is really independent of the people who are doing the hiring and firing. You do not have the immediate access to what's going on at, at, you know, that sort of payable level typically. We're not familiar enough with you yet to know that definitively, but that's, that's typically the way it is. So things could be coming in as compensation data, whether people got hired, whether they had a bona fide termination, whether they have become independent contractors on paper but aren't really independent contractors, and, you know, other ways in which employees or particular schools might be trying to gate the system. Not, you know, you might characterize this fraud. They don't always know exactly, you know, they know what they're doing, but they don't know why or what constraints on it are. But we would certainly discuss that with you too. And in fact, that, that issue of what's a bona fide termination of employment is perennial issue for public retirement systems. I'm sure we would be raising it if, if you were to ask us to do the review and discussing it with you. But I, I'll leave it there for the answer to that question unless you have particular questions, follow-up questions for us. Melanie, do you have anything to add?
No, I think you covered it well, thank you.
All right, any follow-ups? All righty. Last question, how do you handle giving a client, giving client feedback that might be difficult to hear?
Well, really to reiterate what I said before, you know, we're not here to punch fingers at people or to just dig up a bunch of problems. You know, we're, we're involved with helping public retirement systems just come better into compliance, be able to say that they're, you know, fulfilling their fiduciary duties under state law and not under ERISA, you know, with respect to participants and beneficiaries and, you know, with respect to the money that's been contributed, really from the taxpayers of, of state, directly or indirectly, remember, contributions. And, you know, we would just outline it, then have our discussion of the risks involved and the ways in which to, to correct it. I often like to refer to Section 6.02 of the Employee Plan Compliance Resolution System and the Internal Revenue Service, which I'm sure would be involved in any discussions or review we would have. And it says that although they always expect full correction for all years, there are certain cases in which case that is not reasonable or not feasible, in which case correction may not be required. So, you know, we're, we're looking for practical solutions, and we like to present those alongside with the, with the problem. And I don't think we've ever, we've ever, we've never, I mean, I've never come up with a system that had any problem that couldn't be fixed.
Okay. Any follow-up questions from the Board? Okay, that's the extent of the questions that, that we have. Is there anything else that you'd like to, oh, go ahead, Roger has some questions?
This is Roger Ray. I do have a couple of questions I'd like to ask you. Our system may be a little bit different than some of the systems that you've done. What experience do you have in working with systems that are only 1.4 billion dollars in assets and only have four staff as employees?
Yeah, I could not, not quite hear that. What, what our experience are, is with other systems?
What is your experience with plant, small plans like ours, which has 1.4 billion in assets and only four employees?
Um, I mean, I can take that personally, Melanie.
Okay.
Although, yes, Washington Council, we, we do a lot of state retirement systems. We do some of the large county systems and city systems as well. But I would say it, it's really all over the map. You know, you've really only got one, one benefit formula. So, and, and we're not entirely sure, you know, what other providers you may be using, you know, so to support that staff. But, you know, if it's appropriate to the societies, then, then, you know, that staff can be appropriate. If we detect in the course that, you know, some things may not be getting the attention that we would think is best practice, we would certainly raise that. But really, a lot of this stuff, if, also, the question is about, you know, our experience with, they're not at 4 billion dollars, a smaller system. You know, these issues don't really necessarily scale with dollars. The rules are, particularly the IRS rules, are the IRS rules. They don't care whether, you know, you're a relatively small plan by corporate plan standards, or a, or a retirement syst, state retirement system with seven different forms.
And I would just follow up to say that both David and I have worked with systems, public pension systems of all sizes, not just states and large counties, but municipalities and water districts and, you know, transportation districts of all size with very limited staff. So we do have extensive experience in, in that type of system.
I do have a second question that's unrelated to the first. Do you have any concerns about the November 1 deadline for completion?
You want to take it first?
Yeah, well, I'll take it first. Yeah, I mean, it is, is a quicker turnaround than we usually do for a compliance audit. What it means is that we need to get started quickly, and sort of the steps have to be shortened, you know, we have to get data pretty quickly. We probably have to schedule the interview before we've even seen the data, which is not something we would normally do. So it's just, it's a matter of planning when each step is going to be completed to make sure that we meet the deadline. It doesn't seem that it's not, it, it's still a feasible deadline, it's just you have to, you know, we have to hold each other accountable for each step of what we have said we will do for each step of the process.
Yeah, and I would just reiterate that, it's tight but reasonable. Yeah, and I would just reiterate that. It's tight but reasonable.
Other questions from the board? Seeing none, is there anything else that you'd like to make the board aware of as we go into the decision process?
Well, I don't have anything. I would just say thank you for considering us. If you do have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. We'll just pass them on. And we'd be happy to provide service to all the high public schools.
And thank you for your, this time to present to you and talk to you.
Excellent. Well, thank you both for talking.
Well, one thing I had to mention, Ann, which is we are flexible on either in-person meetings and interviews through this process or virtual, whichever you prefer.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Thank you both for taking the time to speak with us this afternoon. Unless there's any other questions from the board. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. You too.
You too.
Good afternoon.
Okay, so you will only see the two people in the front, but everyone will be able to see you on a large screen to the side. And if you can't hear, just speak up and the chair, who will introduce himself, will repeat the question for you. Okay?
Very good.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
All right. Well, welcome. Thank you for taking the time to speak with us this afternoon. I'm Pat Moore. I'm the Chair of the OSERS Board. As Cecilia mentioned, with COVID and technology, the only, the only people that you can see are the two in front of the camera, but the rest of the board is in attendance and will likely ask some questions as we go through the process. And so if you could take a minute or two and introduce yourselves and the firm, and then we'll kind of go through those questions that Cecilia had sent to you, I believe it was yesterday. So if we, we could start with introductions and maybe background of the firm, and then we'll go from there?
All right. Very good. And Mr. Chair, can you hear me all right? All right. Thank you. So we appreciate this opportunity. Good afternoon. My name is Rob Goss. I'm a partner with the law firm of Ice Miller. I've been practicing law for almost 30 years, 2028 this year. Several years with the government before coming to Ice Miller, and I've been with Ice Miller for 24 years. I'll let Audra introduce herself. One thing that she and I have in common is that we both started as litigators in trial practice. And some of the work that I did on the litigation group included taxation, tax issues and benefit issues, which is how I then made my way to our benefits practice, where I've been exclusively for over 10 years now. And together, Audra and I as a team, we represent state and large municipal retirement systems in approximately 35 states, more states when you include exclusively deferred comp plans. But literally from Maine to Alaska is where our clients are, and we look forward to the possibility of working with you and the OSERS team. Audra?
Yeah, thank you. I'm Audra Ferguson Allen. I've been with Ice Miller for 13 years. As Rob mentioned, I was a litigator prior to coming to the Employee Benefits Practice Group. Rob and I do serve as the governmental retirement system attorneys in addition to some other supporting attorneys, associates, a staff attorney. And our practice is unique in that we also have an actuary at our firm. So we have an actuary that works exclusively with our employee benefits group and provides that type of internal support. We've always felt that it was really important for us to have an actuary in-house so that we can address all of our clients' questions fully. And oftentimes, the actuarial questions and the legal tax questions intersect. So we think that provides a very well-rounded experience for our clients and has served us and our clients both very well in the past. And as Rob mentioned, we're thrilled to be here with you today and excited about this opportunity.
Excellent. Thank you. So with that, we'll just kind of, we'll jump into those questions that Cecilia had sent you, and then there'll likely be questions from the board as well. So first question, please describe your methods for planning your audit process before it's officially started.
Yeah, so we'll tag team on this question and probably a lot of the questions, as you will see, which is a reflection of how we work together. But, you know, we think this question and question three may sort of end up morphing into each other, but we'll try, try to keep them separate. So with respect to how we start the audit process, there's really two components, and they're distinct. So there's the document review component, and then there's the operational review component. So I'll talk about our process on the document side, and then Rob will pick up on the operational review side. So from a document review side, really the first thing that we look at is the plan document, which for governmental plans means, you know, administrative codes, statutes, rules, regulations, policies. And we know that you have a very nice, robust website that has a lot of the current policies on there and the history of the plan, which is really useful as well. So that's really a starting point for us. And the primary document after that that we always ask for is a copy of the most recent determination letter. And for us, that's a starting point, a great starting point as a matter of fact, and it helps expedite the review process because we can then see at what point in time did the IRS last look at the plan and give its approval. And from there, then we can build on, okay, what federal laws have changed since then that we need to look at? And so it really helps us hone in on issue spotting and picking up on what changes will be necessary. We have, we talked about it in our proposal, but we have a process that we call Comply Now. I know other firms have different names for their review process, but that's what ours is called. And so really, what it does, it's a process we use to, just like this, review a plan and make sure it's in compliance with federal law. And at the end of the plan review process, then we provide a letter saying, here's everything we looked at. Here's the date of the last determination letter, and here, here is our view on the plan compliance. Clients have found that very useful for any number of things, including certain investments require a current determination letter. And so it helps to bridge that, given the IRS's change and curtailing of the determination letter process. So that's really the starting point, and in fact, a great starting point for the document review process for the audit. And then, Rob, I'll let you talk about the operational piece.
Sure. And let me just also say that in, in large part, our process has already started. I mean, prior to today's meeting, as Audra reflected, we've been on OSERS's website. We have spent time with the actuarial valuation, the most recent valuation. We understand some of the history of the funding level of the system, as well as spending time with Legislative Bill 147 and changes that we know that the system is looking at. So in that regard, we've already started. And to pick up on Audra's point about the determination letter, aside from just the date of the determination letter, the filing that was submitted is very important, as she, as she mentioned, to pick up on where the plan was when it was last reviewed. And that helps us, to the extent that you have it, that helps us to know what was represented to the IRS to constitute the plan when it was submitted. From an operational compliance standpoint, the, the plan as written is going to reflect certain IRS requirements. And then the operation of how those requirements are administered is what we want to hit on when we do the operational compliance part of the review. From just a starting standpoint, that's going to mean meeting with the key members of the staff for OSERS, executive staff, as well as the benefits team, and getting a feel for the programming that is in place in terms of compliance, whether that's programming for compensation limits, whether it's programming for benefits limits. We also want to make sure that we gather information for the administration of compliance with required minimum distributions, those things. So we would have a meeting, we'd identify the necessary people within the team and have a meeting, have a meeting very early on to talk through the needs that we will have in order to get information before we then begin that part of our audit review.
All right. And any questions from the committee? Okay. Question two, please describe the different types of software you have encountered with other audits in your qualifications to work with these different types.
Sure. So we're very familiar with kind of the lead software that is utilized by retirement systems, Pension Gold, Vitac, Sagitac, Tegrit, Deloitte. We have worked with and also contracted with each of those different systems. And when I say contracted with, we've represented the systems when they've entered into contracts for their system upgrades. As part of upgrade projects, we have provided a lot of support to systems as they've been going through their system upgrades to help them on the programming side. And so we're familiar with the processes that need to be done as the software upgrades occur. We, we don't tend to, as part of these, as part of our process, we don't tend to be in the software itself. Rather, it's working with the key staff of the system to pull information from the system in order to do the compliance review, the operational compliance review that we want to do, and then maybe to look at the programming protocols that were put into place, especially when you're looking at, for instance, a 401A 17 or 415 programming to make sure that those code sections are being complied. Audra?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, could you describe the process of a compliance audit? Take the board through, say, a typical compliance audit workflow?
Yeah, sure. As Rob mentioned, we've gone through audits at various levels, from informal, internal audits. We've assisted systems with state-led audits. We've assisted with audits from the IRS and also just compliance checks audits. So we have various levels that we've assisted with. But for this type of audit, as we mentioned, typically we would start with the document piece so we can make sure we have a good foundation and an understanding of the plan terms and how the plan's operating. And from the document piece leads us to a lot of different questions with the staff as far as the process and operationally how, how things work. We also, as Rob mentioned, would interview the staff at the outset, very early on, so that we had a good grasp of the universe that we're working with. We also have various worksheets or questionnaires, if you will, that we would ask the staff to fill out that helps give us a starting point on certain key compliance areas. So areas that we know frequently there are compliance issues with. And those examples of those areas would be the 401A 17 limits, 415B limits, retiree reemployment, always seems to be a hot topic, particularly within the schools, required minimum distributions and service purchases as well. So those are some examples of some really key areas that we tend to work with a lot in compliance issues with plans. And we know that those are our areas that are sort of ripe for compliance concerns. So that's really a starting point for us is those questionnaires. And from there, we're able to then start to build our report and ask further questions. We will also ask for certain samplings, so samplings of a certain number of retirees and active members, again, to check and ensure, one, has their benefit been started timely? If not, we'll look, what is the reason for that? Are they a lost or missing participant? Have the steps that are recommended by the IRS and the DOL been undertaken to try to locate those? So we'll start working through those processes with them. We will also schedule regular calls so that we have check-ins on a regular basis to make sure that sure that, that the process is moving along, that we are responsive, and that we are making sure that we keep everybody informed and up to date. We will also, as, as requested in the RFP, provide regular updates throughout the process, including keeping in contact with the executive staff and also reporting to the board as appropriate. So that's really the common, common way that the process is handled. What's funny is each, each retirement system is unique in its own ways, but the, the common errors seem to always be the same. So we can really hone in on that and help identify those, those pain points and work through that. Rob, anything else you want to add?
Only that, members of the board, we certainly are sensitive to that time is of the essence related to this and that work would need to start immediately, and we are prepared to do that. So if you told us tomorrow that you had selected us, we would be working with the staff next week to get determination letter information and to start the process of gathering the document piece information that we need and also identifying the people who are going to be key to our meetings going forward in terms of the operational compliance piece. I would anticipate that we would have, as soon as we had the initial flow of information from the system, we would be scheduling follow-up meeting for immediate, then face-to-face meeting, you know, in this environment, and also to start to identify the additional information we will need and the people who will be key to, as Audra mentioned, as we're doing reviews for compliance on the operational side, pulling that information for us.
All right. Thank you. Additional questions? Okay. What processes do you follow if you detect any fraud or other compliance issues during the audit?
So I want to break this down into two parts. Certainly fraud is much different than a compliance error. We come across compliance errors with our clients on a regular basis. Some are more concerning than others, and the IRS has a protocol in place that is referred to as the Employee Plans Compliance Resolution System, or EPCs. So there, there are guidance, there is guidance on the steps that need to be taken depending on the error that has occurred. And we would make recommendation to the system and to the, and that includes the staff and to the board of necessary or recommended corrections, depending on what the level of error is. Different types of errors that we've worked on regularly have included violations of 415B limits issues, basis recovery, improper basis recovery issues, tax reporting failures. And these can, the, the approach may differ depending on the number of people involved, the length of time that it's happened, but it may be the kind of thing that we can fix internally, just ourselves, or we might need to apply to the IRS, and we would make that recommendation to you. So that's on the compliance issue. And certainly with any compliance issue that we find, the first step is making sure that we're correcting the problem on a going-forward basis and then looking at the historical error that has occurred. And if I, if I ever say failure, or Audra does, it's not because we're trying to assign any blame. That's the word the IRS uses, and so sometimes we use it, we don't want to, we don't want to scare you by saying that. Fraud is a completely different concern, and when we talk about fraud, I think we have to talk about whether there's been internal fraud within the system or external fraud upon the system. And certainly, if we detect that as part of any compliance review, then it's our obligation to the system. The system is our client. It's our obligation to the system to report that. There are times that we have worked with external counsel, which might be a local prosecutor or an attorney general representative or outside litigation counsel. And certainly, there are clients that we have worked with where we have been working on compliance issues at the same time that they're also handling investigative, criminal investigative issues. And so we're helping to respond to some of the aspects of those inquiries that have been going on at the same time. So that's, that's the approach that we take once it's detected. But certainly, any error, any failure, any fraud or mis, misdeed that is found, it's our obligation to report it back to both staff and to the board on behalf of the system.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think compliance errors happen on, on a regular basis. So it makes up a good portion of Rob and I's practice, is helping clients resolve the compliance issues. If I had to put a percentage on it, it would vary on any given day, but we could be spending easily 60 to 65% of our time working on compliance issues with clients. And as I tell clients, as we tell clients, compliance issues just happen. You know, it's, it's sort of the result of, of a complicated and intricate tax code, and also the number of members and moving parts, beneficiaries, and sometimes just, quite honestly, computer failure, programming failure. And so compliance issues happen on a regular basis, and thankfully, we're able to work through, through those. The IRS has, in recent years, really pushed heavily on self-correction. So for most errors, we are able to assist systems in self-correcting those errors, so not having to go to the IRS for the correction. Instead, we can use IRS guidance and correct it internally. And in fact, we even see that broadening even more under the Secure Act 2.0 that we see. So we think it's going to continue to head in that direction where the IRS is pushing on systems to self-correct. Now, fraud is, as Rob mentioned, a more serious concern. It's something that we have dealt with and do deal with. Thankfully, it's not something we see terribly often because fraud outside the system's different than fraud internally, certainly, but for the most part, we do see that systems really do try to comply and do what's in the best interest of the members and beneficiaries.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Last question is, how do you handle giving client feedback that might be difficult to hear?
Well, given that Rob and I are attorneys that focus on governmental tax compliance in the, in the retirement system, we often are giving feedback that's difficult to hear. So the way we tend to approach it is that we haven't come across an error yet that doesn't have a solution or a problem that's not at some level able to be corrected. There certainly are no fatal errors when we're talking about retirement system tax compliance, or we haven't yet come across a fatal error. So the way our approach is when handling that and giving difficult news or difficult feedback is, we always come with solutions and oftentimes try to come up with multiple solutions that are options as well, so that it's not just here you have a problem, but here, this is the problem, but here's how we can help you fix it, or here's some recommendations on how you could fix it. And oftentimes, we're even able to say, we've worked with other systems that have had the same problem, and here's how they fixed it. Here, here were some of the pain points in fixing it, here's how we worked through that. So we think, given our experience with a lot of other governmental retirement systems, again, rarely do we come across unique issues. Typically, they've come up in one form or another, or many other forms with other clients. So we're able to work through those and say, here's the solution, here's what worked, or we've gone to the IRS with this solution, and here's what the IRS said back. So we're able to work through that and sort of give a preview of how we think we could work through the problem. Rob?
Yeah. Well, thank you. And let me just add, anytime we have a project like this, one of our goals is to be sensitive to both internal and external pressures or realities in which our advice is being given. We've had to give advice to systems where a governor was calling state troopers in to, to prevent the chair of a board from sitting over a board meeting. We know that by their very, by the very nature of our clients, that there are political considerations sometimes at play, and we have to be sensitive to that when we're, when we're giving advice, even advice that might be difficult to hear. And so that's one of the things that we try to do, especially early on, as we were talking through the workflow processes, to, with all the information we've already seen and been able to develop, is to have a better understanding of any pressures related to the system itself, so that we are giving context to the advice when, when we need to provide it.
All right. Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay. Oh, Roger has a couple of questions.
Yes. I'm Roger Ray. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. I have a couple of questions. Our system is fairly small, and you may not have had much experience with that, systems that small. Do you have experience working with systems that have $1.4 billion in assets and only four employees?
So with, without giving a percentage, we certainly have worked with clients that have very small staffs in relation to the amount of assets that the plan administers and is responsible for. And sometimes that is by design because of the interaction of various state offices in relation to the system itself. I, I'm trying to think. Certainly, we've worked with systems that have less than 10 employees. I don't know that I could say for, we've worked with any system that has less than four, that would be a very small staff in relation to...
Well, you know, and, and I do think we've actually worked with plans that have, I would, I would almost argue, no staff. So we work with some small city plans. In fact, we're working with a police officer city plan in Nebraska that they use the city attorney's office. And so we're familiar with a lot of city plans that end up, we work with the city attorney's office because that's really who ends up having the responsibility for these smaller municipal type of plans. So certainly, we're familiar with working with very small, limited number of staff in many different capacities.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
A second question unrelated to the first. You've already alluded to this in some of your previous comments. Do you have any special concerns with the November 1st deadline for completion of the work?
No.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. Seeing none, if there's any final comments or anything else that you'd like to let us know as we begin our deliberation process?
Yes, so we really appreciate the opportunity to, to be before you all today and would, would love the opportunity to work on this project. I think we stand in a unique capacity, not only because of the area that we work in, which is governmental retirement systems, we're familiar with this type of plan and process, but I think, given the type of work that's being requested, we stand in a unique position in that we haven't worked with your system before, and we also do not work with the Nebraska state system. So I think that really allows us to serve as an independent group of attorneys coming in and really taking a fresh look at everything for the first time. Rob?
And as Audra said, we appreciate the time, the consideration, and look forward to the possibility of working with you on what undoubtedly is a very interesting project.
Well, thank you both for taking the time to speak with the board this afternoon. So have a, have a good evening and thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you collaborate for a minute?
Okay. So at, I think at the last board meeting or early on we began this process, there was a board member that had asked for the staff recommendation. And what I'd like to do is kind of stand at ease for a few minutes and allow Cecilia and her staff to converse and see if these finalist presentations might have changed the staff's recommendation. So again, given that we had asked for that early on, I think it's only fair that we give them a minute and let us know if anything's changed based on this input this afternoon. So we'll stand at ease for just a minute or two. So do you want to, you want me to do that, or do you? Okay. Excellent. So, you know, Cecilia's visit with her team and some of the board members, and she said that she thinks that both of them, they had made a recommendation prior, but she said after this presentation, she thinks that either one of the, either one of the firms would do an adequate, or a more than adequate job. So I guess I would look for some discussion and then at some point, somebody to make a motion on one or the other. Go ahead, Roger.
I'll start. I was impressed with both of the firms. To be candid about it, I thought that Ice Miller gave a better presentation, responded to the questions more deeply, indicated that they had already started the process of looking at the history of our system.
And I also think that the, to go off what you said, Scott, about being fair, they are new. They've never worked with any of the Nebraska, the emperors and all that. And I think that fresh eyes is definitely something, especially in this business. Fresh eyes is always a good idea every once in a while. So, I definitely, I would even move to go with Ice Miller.
I'll echo the, I'll echo the same sentiments of everyone else. I appreciated the attention to detail, the attention to some of the legality pieces that came up. I really, really felt like there were some solid understandings of that, so I agree with everyone else.
All right. Thank you. Any thoughts from legal counsel?
Well, you know, when you look at Groom, their reputation is absolutely stellar. They're kind of the leading employee benefits boutique firm. That being said, I hear and appreciate what everybody's saying on the board. I thought Ice Miller came across very well. Just the types of things that they talked about in their review is exactly the way a lawyer should look at this. And so, I think they would be a fine candidate, too. Not voting for one or the other, they're both excellent, but I couldn't, I don't think you could lose either way.
Thank you for that. So, I guess with that, it sounds like there's a consensus, so if, I'll, go ahead, Roger.
I move that we extend the contract for the IRS compliance audit to Ice Miller.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All right. Cecilia, would you call the roll, please?
Ray?
Aye.
Havlevic?
Aye.
Hersonback?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bourne?
Aye.
Dr. Logan stepped out. You have five ayes.
All right. The motion's approved, so we'll authorize Cecilia to, and the executive director, to negotiate a contract for service with Ice Miller to provide compliance audit services in accordance with the RFP issued on April, in April of 2021. All right. So, we'll move down to agenda item six. Kavanaugh McDonald's here to discuss actuarial assumptions and kind of continue our process as it relates to the actuarial assumptions and that. So, welcome, Pat. Nice to see you.
Thank you. Good to be here. Cecilia, it's 5:15. She told me to be here at 5:15. She's exactly right. Pretty impressive. Excuse me. All right, let me see if I can figure this out. There we go. So, I was with you, I guess that was just last month, to present the results of the January 1, 2021 evaluation. A couple of loose ends from that meeting, follow-up items that you all requested, we'll cover today. And then, we decided, you know, an experience study covers a lot of ground. In addition to all the actuarial assumptions, both economic and demographic, we also talk about all the actual methods that are used in the valuation. It's just a lot of material to cover in even one or two meetings. So, we thought we'd kind of carve out the actuarial methods and talk about those today. We'll likely kind of revisit those when we start the experience study, but hopefully, we won't have to spend quite as much time on those. You have a little bit of an inkling of what we're thinking might need to change because of that. So, we'll cover that. That's really going to be the bulk of the discussion today. So, each year when we do the evaluation, we prepare a projection model. The software that we use allows us to do this open group projection where we assume all the assumptions are met. And that means that, you know, the number of people we expect to retire do, the people that we expect to terminate do, as far as retirees, if anybody dies on schedule, it's not particularly realistic, but what we're looking for are general trends here in the projections. We're not trying to say what the contribution will be next year. And so, this shows a graph of the funded ratio. So, two key things. Again, it assumes all of the current assumptions are met. So, we may change assumptions in the experience study, and if we do, the picture looks different. And it also assumes that the full actuarial contribution is made each year. So, the additional school contribution comes through there. So, a couple of interesting things. So, if all the assumptions are met, we're 70% funded in 2032. Okay, so, it takes 12 years to move not quite 10%. And then, we're 80% funded in 2040, eight years later, 90% funded in 2045, and 100% funded in 2049. Just a reminder, the way that unfunded liability is paid off is as a level percent of payroll. And payroll is expected to grow over time, right? The district's payroll, even if we have the same number of employees, pay goes up with just general wage inflation in the economy. So, we have more dollars coming in towards that latter part of that period, and that's when we really start making progress, and that's why you don't move, you know, to move 10% is not an equal number of years each decade. So, hopefully, that answers it. The next slide just really has the numbers that kind of go with this projection. And then, this one is a little bit of a follow-up. I think maybe Scott had asked about this. You know, what return would we need on the market value this year in 2021 to hit that 7.5% bogey on the actuarial value of assets? And why that's important is if we hit that benchmark, the 7.5, we don't have any actuarial losses coming through, which then increase the contribution rate. So, we'd take 12.5% in 2021 on market to create a 7.5% return on actuarial value. Okay? And you can see, again, because of smoothing, you don't get it all in one year. It kind of flows through gently. The gray bars here are the 7.5% return all year. So, again, that's, all assumptions are met. And then, the red bar is if we earn 12.5 just in 2021. And you can see, that kind of keeps the additional district contribution more stable in terms of dollars. And then, just to be fair, when we look at different scenarios, if we go the same amount in a different direction, so 5% lower, which would be 2.5, that'll increase the additional district required contribution, about $1 million, and those are the blue bars. And again, that one year of a 5% miss, so to speak, kind of flows through, and it kind of keeps that increasing over time. I think the other question was, well, what would the return need to be in 2021 on market value to hit a 7% return on actuarial? And you can see in the little footnote, that would be 10.5%. Okay? So, we're in a position where the actuarial value is higher than the market value, so we need to earn above the assumption to avoid having an actuarial loss on assets. Any questions? All right. Great. So, a little bit about actuarial methods. The methods that we use compose OSR's funding policy, and that is set by the board. We use really three key methods. What's called an actuarial cost method, a way to allocate costs for the benefits that are being earned across different periods of service. Okay? There are something like six different methods. Then, we use an asset smoothing method, and that, a few systems use pure market value. That's their, you know, they don't smooth, they just use market value. Most use a smoothing method. And what that smoothing method does is it develops an asset value that we use in the valuation in all of our calculations instead of market. So, it's market-related, but we calculate it, and then we use it for all of our key metrics, including the actuarial contribution rate. And it has to meet certain standards. We'll talk about that in a minute, as far as actual standards of practice. You can't get too wonky or out in left field. It has to be market-related. Differences between actual and expected experience have to be recognized over a reasonable period of time. So, there are some guardrails there. And then, the amortization method. Remember, that actuarial liability is kind of our target. The way we're funding, that's where the asset value, the asset value should be. It hardly ever is precisely that amount. So, there's usually a difference between the actuarial value of assets and the actuarial liability, and we call that the unfunded actuarial liability. And we need a method to make that unfunded liability go away, to fund the system up to 100% over time. And that's what the amortization method does. It creates a payment schedule, so to speak. So, if you buy a house and they give you an amortization schedule, it says how you're going to pay your loan off. That's exactly what this does, except it varies every year. Your personal one probably does not do that. So, we'll talk about each of these in a little more detail. Again, the Actuarial Standards Board issues standards of practice, credentialed actuaries must follow those. So, it's not just a couple actuaries sitting in the Omaha Office of Kavanaugh McDonald coming up with wild idea. We follow those. We take them very seriously. ASOP 44 is the one that provides guidance on the asset valuation method, and ASOP 4 provides guidance on the actuarial cost method and the amortization of the unfunded liability. And then, we take into consideration sort of industry guidance, comes from different sources. The GFOA is the Governmental Finance Officers Association. They've kind of weighed in on what's a reasonable funding policy. Conference of Consulting Actuaries has a very long white paper on funding for public plans, and the Society of Actuaries kind of got in on the action as well in the last few years. All right. So, the cost method, the actuarial cost method, we're using what is called entry-age normal. It's been called that as long as I've been working in this arena. It's because we're funding the benefit, the cost of the benefit, the ultimate, cost of the ultimate benefits are going to be paid over a member's working career from entry-age to exit age. Hence, entry-age, I'm not sure where the normal came from, but entry-age. So, we're going to create, again, kind of a cost pattern while people work, and this one says, we're going to fund it as a level percent of pay. Okay? So, if you think about, you know, if you had a defined contribution plan and said, you know, the contribution was going to be 10% of pay for your career, you don't know what the benefit will be at the end of that career. This is sort of the flip side. We know the benefit amount. Based on our assumptions, we calculate what that percent of payroll is. It has to go in every year that a person works. So, we have enough money reserved when they retire to pay them as long as they're expected to live. Okay? So, that part that is allocated to years that have already been worked, past, it's in the past, that's the actuarial accrued liability. The piece that is allocated to the current year, so when we did the 1121 evaluation, we knew all the active members. And for every one of those active members, they have a normal cost this year. They're all different, and then we add them up to get a total and divide by payroll to get a normal cost rate, but it varies for each individual depending on their personal situation. That's called the normal cost. That's what's allocated to the current year. Okay? So, to 2021. And then, all those people that are active, there's some probability that they will continue to work in the future, right? And if they work in the future, there'll be a normal cost in that year that will get paid, because again, if you think about, if you did sort of a timeline over a person's career, they're going to work 30 years. You've got 30 years, if you're, at year 15, the 15 years they've already worked is in the past, the current year, and then the 14 more is in the future. Okay? So, those are future normal costs. Okay? Again, the rate is developed as a level percent of pay, and the pay is expected to increase over time. In this case, not just with general wage inflation, but with merit scale, longevity, you know, as you move through the pay schedule. So, that's all sort of baked into the numbers. Fortunately, the computers do all the heavy calculations for us. So, the dollars of normal cost increase over time, the rate, the percent of pay, is level. Okay? This is the most common cost method used by public plans. Been doing this for 30-plus years, and it's been the most common that entire period. More recently, for the GASP 67 and 68 calculations, which were effective in 2015, you have to use entry-age normal for those calculations. So, now, unless you want to do two separate evaluations and pay for two separate evaluations, most people have most definitely gravitated to entry-age. But this really is the, for public plans, because of the stability that it creates in the normal cost rate, that's why it's been popular for years. All right. You know me well enough, if you have questions, just stop me. I think I forget to try to say that. All right. So, the asset smoothing method. This one gets a little harder, I think, not conceptually, but mathematically maybe to understand. So, I know we talked about this last month, that the volatility associated with the market value of assets is really almost ridiculous. When we look at the chart that shows the actual return versus expected, the actual's hardly any time close to the expected. It's way higher, way lower, and it's all over the board. If we use that in our actuarial calculations, budgeting would be a nightmare. I mean, it already has challenges, but it would be way worse because it would be way up and way down, and with the district putting in additional contribution, it would really exacerbate that. So, most systems use what's called an asset valuation method, asset smoothing method, just to kind of average out the highs and lows. Okay? Again, just like actuarial cost method, there's different methods. They all smooth. There isn't really a right or wrong, as long as they comply with actuarial standards. Okay? So, you'll find a few different ones out there. There's probably fewer than there used to be. The smoothed value that's calculated using that methodology is called the actuarial value of assets. And when you read a valuation report, almost every number you'll see uses actuarial value unless it specifically says otherwise. So, that's kind of the default, whether we're looking at funded ratio, unfunded actuarial accrued liability, or the actuarial contribution rate. It's all used a smoothed, smoothed value or actuarial value. So, Actuarial Standard of Practice 44 basically says that that smoothed value should bear a reasonable relationship to market value. And you can kind of see the two options there. It has to satisfy both of the following... up and way down. And with the district putting in additional contribution, it would really exacerbate that. So, most systems use what's called an asset valuation method, asset smoothing method, just to kind of average out the highs and lows. Okay, again, just like actuarial cost method, there's different methods. They all smooth. There isn't really a, a right or wrong as long as they comply with actuarial standards. Okay, so you'll find a few different ones out there. There's probably fewer than there used to be. The smoothed value that's calculated using that methodology is called the actuarial value of assets. And when you read a valuation report, almost every number you'll see uses actuarial value unless it specifically says otherwise. So that's kind of the default. Whether we're looking at funded ratio, unfunded actuarial accrued liability, or the actuarial contribution rate. It's all used a smoothed, smoothed value or actuarial value. So Actuarial Standard of Practice 44 basically says that that smoothed value should, should bear a reasonable relationship to market value. And you can kind of see the two options there. It has to satisfy both of the following. Produces a value within a reasonable range around market. You know, so if your method is coming up with a value that's 130% of market, probably not going to work. And it recognizes the difference between market value and actuarial in a reasonable amount of time. If you read actuarial standards, you will find, the word reasonable is quite popular and it's not a bright line test. So a lot of professional judgment involved there. But as a practicing actuary, you kind of get to know your, your way around what's reasonable and what's not. If you don't meet either of those, you can meet either one of the following. That the actuarial value is sufficiently close to the market value. Okay, that there, we use something called a corridor or a collar that just says, you can't get too far from reality. Okay? And the one we use is 20%. So you calculate the smoothed value, it has to fall within a range of 80% and 120% of actual market. So just, you can smooth, but you can't go too far from reality. Or you recognize that difference in a sufficiently short period. And we'll talk in a minute, the, one of the common methods uses five years and that's, that's pretty generally accepted that that is a reasonable period. All right, so the method that we're using right now in the OSERS valuation, doesn't have a very fancy name. It's, it's 75% of the expected value if the assumptions were met. And 25% of the actual market value. An expected value will recognize dollars coming in and benefits being paid out, kind of net cash flow. So again, we're essentially, we're calculating the expected value and adding 25% of the difference between market and expected. Okay? So if, if assumptions were met every single year in the future, which they won't, the actuarial value will converge to market value eventually, kind of asymptotically if you're, if you're math people, but it's going to, it's going to come really, really, really closer, closer, closer. Instead of just boom, it's there in five years. Okay? So I think I've got a graph here that'll help show that. Thought I had one. Okay, I guess I want to cover this before we look at the graph. So the other method I wanted to talk to you guys about is the most, probably the most common method used by public plans. It is the method used by the Nebraska retirement system. And it's, it's basically a closed five-year smoothing method. All right? And it recognizes the dollar amount of the difference in the actual return versus the expected return. Again, the expected is based on the actuarial assumed rate of return and cash flows. And it just recognizes that evenly over five years. Okay? Let me get to where I can see this a little bit better. Oh, I know. I'm going to digress here for a minute if you don't mind. There's the graph I was looking for, it's on the bottom of the darn slide, where you can see the, the blue line is market value and the red line is actuarial. So you can see after five years, there is still a difference, but over time they get closer and closer and closer. So that was what I was talking about. All right, so the alternate method, which is the one that Npers uses, is again this closed five-year. And it basically, we just have an example here to, to help you maybe better understand this. If we, if, if, if we were using this for OSERS, this, this is how we would calculate it. So we would have looked for the calendar year in 2020 and looked at the actual return versus the expected return at seven and a half. Okay, and that was about 21 million. So we recognize a fifth of that this year in the 1121 valuation, which means we don't recognize or we defer 80% of it. Right? We're going to, so a fifth of 21 million is like 4.2 million. So we're going to recognize 4.2 this year and the next four years. That kind of makes sense? And then what, what else is going to impact us this year is what happened in 2019, 2018, 2017, and even though it's not on here, 2016, is fully recognized because there's no deferral of that experience. We're five years in. But so if 2019 was another really good year on return, so we had a gain of 74.2 million, and we recognize a fifth of that every year, which is about 14.8 million. Well, we already recognized the first one in 20, the 2020 valve. And now we've recognized the second piece in the 2021 valve, right? So we've recognized 40%. That means there's 60% we have not recognized. Okay? This may seem a little backwards, but the way we get there is we start with market value, which recognizes all of it, right? And then we subtract out the deferred pieces, the pieces that have not yet been recognized. Okay? And so it's the same with 18, there's 40% that isn't recognized yet. And for 17, there's only 20%. So for 2017, we have one more piece of the 6,260,000 that will come through in the 2022 valuation. Okay? So it's a little, I think it's a little easier to understand, at least conceptually. We thought we were going to earn this, and we earned this. And so whatever that difference is, divide it by five. And I'll recognize a fifth of, you know, the first piece this year, and then a fifth each of the next four years. And it just kind of flows through the smoothing that way. Again, just a way to average the ups and downs of the market, which can look there and see that there are definitely ups and downs. So I thought it might be helpful to, to kind of put some real numbers to this to help explain it a little bit. So we went back and pulled the investment return back to September of 1991. Because remember before, when was the 17 valve? We were on, on fiscal year valves. And just said, if we applied the methodology every year, you know, what would these values look like? So the black line is market value. So that, that's what we're trying to smooth, is the jagged ups and downs there. The current method is the blue line. And then this five-year closed smoothing is the red line. So you, I think you can see, I mean, they, they both smooth, right? And there's really not a lot of difference. Certain times, the red line's above the blue line, sometimes the blue line's above the red line. The blue line is maybe a little smoother. You get a little more smoothing out of that method. But they, they both sort of do their job, one way or another. And we've, we've wrestled with this before. I think Roger may be the only one on the board now that's been, we've wrestled with it several times, haven't we, Roger? And we sort of stayed with the current method because we liked, it had more smoothing and it sort of bounces back quicker. If you have a bad return, followed by a really strong return, it'll bounce, it'll converge to market a little more quickly than the other method. Yeah, so I guess I kind of probably covered that. I think the current method is challenging because of the 25% people always say, oh, it's four-year smoothing. And, and it's not really. I mean, if you, if you were going to move from that wall to that wall and use this method, so you go a fourth of the way the first time, and then you go a fourth of the remaining, three-fourths, in four moves, you will not be there. So it, it's sort of misunderstood, but it's really nice because, like, we can do this. So you need 12 and a half percent this year and you'll hit your, your seven and a half on actuarial. That's, that's nice. Five-year closed smoothing, again, that's the most common method and the most common period. Five years is the most common period. I think conceptually, it's easy to understand, but sometimes cranking through the math is, is, can be hard to follow. And then it seems a little counterintuitive because you're subtracting out what, what's unrecognized instead of adding in. And so that takes a little bit to get, to get used to. All right, so the last method I want to visit with you about is the amortization policy. And again, this is what determines how the unfunded liability will be paid off over time. Okay? And there are several components to that amortization policy. The first is the number of amortization bases. Okay? So you can just have one, roll everything into one, and just amortize that and basically sort of refinance the total amount each year over a given period. That is rather out of vogue, to just be very honest. I would say in the last five to 10 years, we've seen most systems move to layered amortization, which is in fact what the board did, I think it was in 2017. Where, where you have pieces and each piece has its own payment schedule. I mean, they all may start with the same number of years, but each year it goes down by one. It's a little bit like you take on a mortgage on a house and then the next year you want to add on a room, and so you get a second mortgage, so to speak. And then the next year, you want to remodel your kitchen, you have a third mortgage, and you add up all the mortgage payments and that's your total unfunded liability payment. That's how that works. We talked about the payment methodology. We're funding the system with contributions that are a percent of payroll. So developing a payment scheme or schedule that is also related to payroll makes, makes sense. As far as if you're trying to allocate costs across long periods of time in sort of an equitable manner. And then the other key piece is how long is it going to take you to pay that off? Each time there's an amortization base. So in the 2018 valuation, we moved to closed 30-year periods. So every time we establish a base, it's over a closed 30-year period. So the one established in 18 is down to 27. So that's where we're at now. Couple of comments. The industry is changing. Would say has, has changed and is continuing to change. It used to be, so you probably remember this, but 20 years ago, people had 30-year open periods, which means you're refinancing it over 30 years every single year. You hardly ever see that anymore. So there's very much a move to closed periods and to shorter periods. It has to do with this allocation of costs and the thought that the experience that happens for the current membership should be paid off over their remaining working lifetime, which is actually a shorter period than the difference between their assumed retirement age and their attained age, because not everybody's sticking around. So you'll see, second bullet, you know, generally, it's 15 to 20 years is sort of the sweet spot on a lot of this guidance. GFOA is 25 years. My personal opinion is if you're trying to fund it with fixed contribution rates in general, that maybe you can justify it a little bit longer period because of the meca funding mechanism there. We have had a couple of exposure drafts on Actuarial Standard of Practice Number Four that talk about amortization of the unfunded liability. And there's been a lot of comments on that, and so we're supposed to get a third draft anytime this summer. We'll see if anything changes, but the first two have basically said that that unfunded liability should be amortized or paid off over a reasonable time period, or the balance should be reduced by a reasonable amount each year. So again, if we're using the level percent of pay over a long period like 30 years, the dollar amount of the unfunded liability is going to increase. And you can see that first bullet, it increases for 10 years before it starts to come down. Because there's so much less money going in in the early part of the year, we're not covering the interest on the unfunded liability by design. Okay? Because we've got those dollars increasing, 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 means early on, we're not, we're not keeping up with it. So again, it's not a bright line test, but 30 years is probably unlikely to be considered reasonable by the actuarial profession. Now, that doesn't mean they can't tell you what to do. They can tell me what I can do when I sign my, my name up with my credentials, but they can't tell you what to do. So could you leave it at 30? Yeah, you could, but what happens is, and I have to qualify the report and say that's not reasonable and doesn't comply with actuarial standards, which is not my favorite thing and I probably don't think it would be your favorite thing. So, you know, we just finished an experience study for the state of Nebraska for the PERS, Npers plans. And what we recommended there was shortening the period for new bases. So to kind of lessen the pain from a contribution side, do it prospectively on the new pieces. Now theoretically, you should have gains and losses, right? If the assumptions are right over the long run, to the extent you have experience that is unfavorable, you should have somewhere down the line experience that's favorable. And if you're amortizing them over the same 25-year period, there shouldn't really be a bias. But anytime you fund it over a shorter period, that means it has a bigger impact on the contribution. And that'll create a little bit more volatility in the contribution, which is not everybody's favorite thing. So, I mean, we just need to look at that. But clearly, if you went from 30 to 20, you have a lot more volatility than if you go from 30 to 25. Okay? And again, that legislation was passed, I think it was LB 17 maybe, that actually changed that for the state retirement system. So that's probably a little bit of a foreshadowing of what, what might be expected. So just to wrap up, I know you guys had kind of a long night. We are very, very, very likely to recommend that we keep entry age normal. Can't imagine anything happening to change that, but just till we issue the report, it's not issued. Asset smoothing, again, the current method is reasonable. It's acceptable. They each have pros and cons, but the alternate method is also reasonable. You saw they both smooth. It's just how they're doing it. I, you know, we may want to have a little bit more discussion on that with the recent bill that passed. It may make sense to move to the Npers method. We have time to, time to noodle on that and come back to it. On amortization, likely to recommend we stay with layered. I really do think that's sort of the best practice in the industry. Payments as a level percent of payroll is reasonable given the way this plan is funded. The one we really need to wrestle with there is maybe shortening the amortization period for new bases going forward. So just wanted to lay the framework, because the first time you hear some of this stuff, it's a little weird. It gets a little easier. And then you get, like Roger, he could probably get up and give this presentation. But we just thought it would be better if you had a little bit of background before we jump into this hot and heavy and have to cover this and, you know, economic or demographic assumptions. So happy to answer any questions if you have them. If not, I hope it's been sort of educational, some supplemental information in the back, but didn't want to spend hours of time going through that. So if there's anything you're interested in, we can circle back on that probably in August when we start the experience study. probably in August, when we start the experience study. I did talk to Max, I don't think I told you this even, Cecilia. The Aon Capital Market Assumptions will not be out until probably the first part of August. So I think what we'll do is tackle the demographic assumptions in August meeting. And then, once we have their capital market assumptions, we can talk economic assumptions, September or October, whatever works out with your schedule. Okay?
Just real quick, how do we actually make the decision? Is it our, is it the board's decision on these methods? Or is it your recommendation? And then we just...
Everything is the board, as fiduciaries. We will make a recommendation, but ultimately, the board decides.
Okay.
You know, for the state plan, a lot of it is in statute, but it's not the case for you guys.
Got it. Thank you.
Very, very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Ms. Beck? All right, nothing additional. Thank you. Okay, we'll jump down to Agenda Item 7. And then I think what we'll do is we'll take Agenda Item 7, then we'll go to 9, and then back to 8. And there's a method to this. But anyway, what we thought we would do is just kind of give a high level overview of the impact of 147. Everybody's aware that that passed. I think it's really important to note, and those folks that are listening, that, you know, there were no benefit structure changes with the passage of 147 to the actual plan, right? So there remains four tiers in the OSERS Pension Plan and the same provisions that were adopted prior to the passage of 147. So again, 147 was passed here in this past legislative session and obviously goes into effect. So I thought I'd just kind of go through quickly the, kind of the target dates or specific dates or things, dates that this board and others should be aware of. So effective July 1, 2021, the OSERS Board of Trustees is going to be reconstituted to a seven-member Omaha Public Schools Board of Education Subcommittee. The seven, the current OSERS seven Board of Trustees will be replaced by the seven-member OPS Board of Education Subcommittee. The members of that will consist of the superintendent, again, this is pursuant to the legislative bill that's passed. The, will consist of the superintendent, two members of the OSERS plan, one of whom shall be a teacher, two members of the Omaha Public School Board of Education, and two community business persons with a background in financial affairs and are not members of the retirement system. The new Subcommittee Board of Trustees shall be appointed within 15 days of the effective date of passage of 147. And with the exception of the business appointees, the term of office is for one fiscal year. The bill directs OPS, OSERS, and PERS to stakeholders to begin a transition plan for the administration of OSERS to NPERS. The bill also changed the definition of termination of employment to clarify what a bona fide separation of service is. Contracts, the bill provided for contracts or stated that contracts for professional services held by OSERS Board of Trustees will need to be assigned to the OPS Subcommittee. So that's all the things that take effect on July 1. On September 1 of 2021, the definition of regular employee for purposes of mandatory contribution to the OSERS plans changed. It now to include a person with an average of 30 hours or more per week in a calendar month of any three calendar months of a fiscal year. Let's see, on November 15 of 2021, the compliance audit of OSERS is due to the Legislative Retirement Committee. We passed that earlier, the RFP there. Effective January 1 of 2022, each January thereafter, an audit of the condition of the OSERS retirement system is to be conducted by the Nebraska Auditor of Public Accounts. Effective January 1 of 2023, every OPS contract of employment with an employee shall specify, one, the contract period of employment, including start and end date, and two, that is subject to the provisions of the Class V School Employees Retirement Act. And then lastly, effective September 1, 2024, the Director of NPERS will represent each retirement system under the Class V School Employees Retirement Act on the Investment Council. NPERS Board increases to nine appointed members. Previously, before the passage of 147, was eight. And then NPERS will begin administration of the OSERS Pension Plan. Retirement application is changed to encompass the forms and procedures as defined by NPERS. And pension payments will be dispensed by the Nebraska State Treasurer and Director of Administrative Services. So that's just kind of a highlight of the important dates in LB147. And if you want to copy this, or it might be in your board packets already, so. Any discussion or comments on the legislative report? Okay, so I think we, in order to just make it more seamless on the agenda, I think we'll jump down to Agenda Item 9. You know that we had previously engaged with a lobby firm. And the contract that the lobby firm has with us requires a 30-day notice. It doesn't seem to make sense that the plan continue to expend dollars on a, you know, given where we are with 147. So I would make the motion that we give the 30-day, or excuse me, I guess Delane has a motion. If there's any discussion on terminating that contract, we can certainly have that now. Maybe it's appropriate to have the motion first and a second, and then we'll have a discussion.
Yep, I'll show the motion. I move the Executive Director is authorized to give notice of termination to the government relations firm in accordance with the terms of the agreement.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Again, it just doesn't seem to make any sense to continue to expend planned funds, given where we are with LB147. So any questions, comments, thoughts, concerns? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cecilia?
Ray.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hurson-Bach.
Aye.
Havlevic.
Aye.
And Born.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay, so Cecilia will send that notice of termination to the firm, and we'll go there, go from there. We thank them for their service to OSERS. With that, we'll jump down to the Executive Director's report.
Can we go back to...
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. We're going to Agenda Item 8. Discussion or Action on the Trustee Meeting Calendar for 2021 and 2022. Cecilia, would you give an overview of that calendar?
Certainly. Historically, we've always set the calendar in June, at the June meeting, for the next fiscal year, so to speak. In light of the changes with LB147, I ask that the board just approve the calendar. And then, once the new board comes on, if there are any changes that the new board wants to institute for a schedule, we certainly can have another, passage of another schedule and change anything we want to. But at least this gives the public notice for this year and at least for the, at least the August meeting forthcoming.
All right, thank you, Cecilia. Roger?
I move the Board of Trustees adopt the 2021-2022 meeting schedule of calendars as presented. But note that there are a couple of dates early on where the meeting is not on Thursday. It's on a different day of the week, otherwise it's on Thursdays.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on the trustee meeting calendar for '21 and '22? Seeing done, Cecilia, would you call the rule?
Ray.
Aye.
Logan. Hurson-Bach.
Aye.
Havlevic.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Born.
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right, the calendar is adopted. All right, now we'll jump down to the Executive Director's report. Cecilia?
I want to note to the board and to the listening public that effective June 1 through July 31, the TAC building will be instituting its summer hours. And this is just to note that the Office for OSERS will be closing at 4:30, but it opens up at 7, which we've always had somebody here at 7 anyway. Cost for the fiduciary liability insurance was assessed in May, and that is the fiduciary insurance for the board members. Remember, it is underwritten by two different underwriters and put together. The total cost for this May 2021 through May 2022 is $74,725. So that has already been assessed to our fund. Staff has already begun processing the 118 June 1 retirements to ensure a smooth upload of the additional files for the July 3 payment. And finally, with the passage of LB147, I just want the board to know that Director Gurke and I have already talked to assure him that the OSERS staff is ready to assist with this transition. And with that, that ends the Executive Director's report.
Does the change in board makeup change the fiduciary insurance?
That is something, it's funny you said that. That is something I noted today when I looked at it, and I will have a discussion with the CFO.
I'm wondering if OPS Board has fiduciary insurance that may cover? If they don't need to?
They do. It encompasses both right now. But will it change in the future? Maybe.
So maybe, okay. Is that something you'll check on?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other additional questions for Cecilia? All right, thank you for that. I will move to Agenda Item 11, the trustees' report.
I do have an item, or actually, a couple of items. I received notice today that NCTR's annual trustee workshop will be held this summer in July, July 26 through 28. It will be conducted by the staff at Berkeley, California, as usual. And it will be a virtual meeting again this year. I attended the meeting last year by, on a virtual basis. I found it to be very informative, and I would encourage the new members to the board who are going to be appointed by the school board to be considering that particular trustee training. I also received notice from NCTR that they have named a new executive director. It's Dean Kindredine. He's a former executive for the Maryland Retirement System. I think he'll be a great addition to the NCTR staff.
All right, thank you, Roger. Any other comments from the, any trustees? All right, seeing done. Agenda Item 12, Discussion, Actions on Payroll, Retirement, Deaths, Refunds, and Accounts Payable. Cecilia?
Pension payroll for June was $11,235,658 to 5,094 recipients. Staff payroll for June remained at $32,300. 118 new retirements for the month of June, adding $232,235 to the monthly payroll. There were four terminations of pension payments and five continuations to joint and survivor annuities as a result of the death of the retiree. One beneficiary elected to take a lump sum. Refunds for June total $323,288.38 to 46 former OSERS members who have elected to remove their funds and forfeit any benefits out of OSERS. And account payable, excuse me, accounts payable for the month of June is a total of $40,011 even. That ends the report.
I don't have a comment on the report. I just have a correction to the motion I made on the meeting schedule. I noticed a typographical error on the meeting for August. It says Tuesday, August 5. It should be Thursday, August 5.
All right, so noted. Thank you, Roger. Okay, so Cecilia's gone through the overview on Agenda Item Number 12.
I move the Board of Trustees, for the month of June, ratify and approve the pension payroll, staff payroll, new retirements, terminations, and surviving annuities. Due to death of the retiree, refunds and accounts payable as was described.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on Agenda Item Number 12? Seeing done, Cecilia?
Hurson-Bach.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Logan. Havlevic.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Born.
Aye.
Six ayes.
All right, it is adopted. Agenda Item Number 13, is there any new business for the committee? Seeing done. With that, we'll adjourn. Thank you, everybody.